Okay. Some of you don't have any money, so we won't do that.
This is less pretend.
Pretending we have money.
Point to the closer where I'm going today.
Why are you moving?
So, we had a staff meeting today. We had it down here because the air conditioner's not working. So, before Gail got here, we all sat in the very back row. And we're all sitting there. She came in, she wasn't paying attention. Down was done, she looked up, and she's like, "What?"
Okay, let's call a meeting. City Council Special Meeting for Tuesday, June 11th. No public comments and announcements. Okay, so we'll adjourn the regular city session and enter into the workshop session. 2.1, Presentation to City Council on Fiscal Year 2024-25 Capital Improvements Program, CIP Projects for Review and Discussion. Gail?
All right, Mayor and Council, no paper tonight. So, are all your monitors working, hopefully? Good. Okay. So, tonight's session is meant to be a first pass at recommendations for your Fiscal Year 25 Capital Improvement Program. With understanding that this is still a very much a work in progress, there's three or four discussion items that, as we're kind of going over the normal projects that you typically see every year, there's some big things that we need to kind of stop and see the pulse from City Council. So, I don't anticipate tonight really evaluating any type of really big approval or decision. We will come back with subsequent workshops. And then ultimately, whatever the final CIP recommendation and those funding proposals will be attached to your budget. And then when you approve that budget, you'll be essentially approving your budget and your CIP. So, you've got a couple more passes at this. Tonight is very high level, preliminary, and a lot of feedback from you on my recommendations and if I need to shift gears in some of those recommendations. So, just as a recap, I've got the next few slides that just kind of recap of what this is. I think we've talked it to death over the last couple of years. We've built upon the CIP, but it's really meant for us to build on this and use it as a tool to prioritize the projects that not only staff see as a priority, but as Council sees as a priority. This is in your charter as a step that is recommend, or not recommended, but required and mandated to be put with your budget. So, there is certain stipulations that I have to follow per the charter. And then, just as a recap of where these projects come from. So, obviously, through the years, Seabrook has typically had water, wastewater, and some park projects, but it's been very heavy on the Public Works-type projects. Over the last six or seven years, we've expanded it to include the IT, the facilities, and sidewalks here recently. So, we've tried to expand it. Most of these projects, again, come from department request. Public Works, Kevin and Brian are resident experts on, obviously, our most critical infrastructure, if something comes to end of life, or if it's just needing to be rehabbed, redeveloped. That's preliminarily where we start, and obviously, the bulk of our larger projects. We sometimes are getting mandates that also require things like the wastewater treatment plant to have to be upgraded when we were at the old plant. And then, recently, y'all have experienced the pool. We have a lot of assets that are coming to end of life, and age is coming into play. So, we're trying to make sure that we, every year, adding additional projects age-related. Citizen survey is something the last few years I've introduced, is to give you a little bit of feedback, pulse from your residents, to see if there's any project that has not been discussed or thought about. Obviously, not all of the projects or the discussion that's in the survey is something that we can act on, but sometimes we can evaluate it. And if it prioritizes higher in the list, it's something that's added to this CIP projects. Boards and commissions. Shawn has worked with Open Space, as well as Kevin and Brian, over the last couple of years, also in the park areas, to see if there's recommendations from that particular board. Feasibility studies. We've recently gone through the EMS, and then also the police and court feasibility studies. So, those are studies that also can deliver implementation projects. Our livable center study is another plan that we draw from. So, we've got multiple sources that we try to keep in check every year to make sure that we are hitting everything and trying to keep it in a concentrated place to keep those projects alive, even if there's not funding, which you'll see is the case sometimes. From there, how the process works is we get around, we look at all of the projects, and we try to rank them from staff, knowing the best that we know what's going on in the community, the funding, and citizen surveys, master plans, et cetera. A lot of those projects are cut from the current year. So, we start off much probably like you would love to do 100% of the projects, but that would be millions of dollars. So, from there, we have to look at each one of the funds that we're trying to take money from. That's where finance comes into play. If there's projects that are just not feasible with the monies we have available, you'll see that we start pushing those out. For tonight, I focused on just your fiscal year 25, so you're not seeing those additional years yet. But if you don't see anything in that fiscal year 25, obviously, they've been pushed out many years into the future. From there, get back with Mike, and we look at all of those funding sources and decide which ones come to you in the workshop that we're in tonight, and I make a recommendation. So, again, all of the projects that we try to capture here are your infrastructure, water, sewer drainage, streets, transportation, facilities, equipment, and vehicles are in a separate plan, but they're being accounted for. Parks, sidewalks, and then anything that's a high dollar in the IT area. Again, from Council's perspective, a lot of times, I'm looking for direction if we need to go out for new debt, and we've talked about that last year. Tonight's discussion is not any different. There's a stopping point that we'll need to talk about if Council has a temperament for going out for new debt. Approval, then, for ultimately that fiscal year that we're in, to see where we land. This is a snippet. This is a, if you can see it, hopefully on your monitor, it's a little bit better. It just is an example of all the different assets, particularly in our Public Works and facility areas, that we have to maintain in our asset holdings. So, it's a lot of things that we are in charge of and also trying to monitor as far as end of life, maintenance, and operation, and trying to keep all of that ahead of the cash flow. We talked about streets with the AI technology that we talked about in a previous meeting. And again, this is just sort of a recap of, you know, a lot of times, when the money's not there and that deferred maintenance happens, we end up with trying to catch up. So, this year, with the certificates of obligation and issuing that debt, that's our catch-up in this particular area. Streets is growing as our highest need, and we're not going to be able to accomplish everything, but it's something that we do need to make sure we get ahead of as far as the maintenance on some of these that have been deferred. I spoke about the fleet replacement programs. So, we are in good shape there. We have two primary programs, and so all of our police vehicles, now all of our administrative vehicles, and lastly, our new ambulance vehicles that are coming online, those have a plan. When you go to look at the budget document, each one of the departments within that budget have a line that's called amortization. So, we are actually paying a good chunk of change to put away savings, to amortize, to be able to keep us on this schedule. So, our vehicles right now are either on a seven-year plan or a 10-year plan, and we've gone through a number of cycles now. And as you can see, our fleet, I believe, is looking top-notch as far as the cycles that we're on and being able to keep that more current. Flipping over to the citizen survey, I sent that out to you in your emails, so hopefully that y'all have had a chance to kind of dive into it. I've taken the highlights here, just to kind of hit on. So, we asked a few questions in regards to the areas of streets, drainage, and parks, and I pulled out the highest percentage as far as the responses. Wanting on that top section to make sure we were heading in the right direction as far as streets, I feel like with the North Meyer being our first street, I think we've got some strong support there. And pavement improvements in general, and then, of course, that's safe routes to school. So, we're continually looking for, and North Meyer's an example of that, going back with streets where it's appropriate to put sidewalks, especially if they're in close proximity to the schools. Drainage, we live close to the bay, and our floodplain administrator tells me all the time, "We're in good shape, we'll drain, and everything's great." And so, this was an interesting question, I think, for the majority. You'll see a couple of comments in there. We've got some problem spots isolated, but overall, I think people think our stormwater infrastructure is in good shape. Our improvements on the parks, I don't think it's a surprise, but our fishing pier was high in the percentage on that response. Trails, trail maps, kayak launch, and then we wanted to get a pulse for if there is a need to add some restrooms on the trails and standardize those amenities, in particular, water fountains, those type of things, trash cans, and so you can kind of see the corresponding results there. And this is just a few, again, comments. If you've looked through the survey, this is just verbatim from the survey. So, there wasn't a lot of comments, actually, from the survey that really drove any brand-new projects for us, but we'll definitely have that available later in the presentation if there's anything that Council wants to introduce. Next two slides, we'll run through, just to give you a recap of where we're at currently. So, what you approved in this current fiscal year that we're just a little bit over and done with is, on the far left, you'll see the Taylor Lake Water Line. Screen check mark, that's been completed, and that was with our ARPA funds. We are in the progress of getting the Red Oak Acres Water Line in movement. We are on hold, basically, on our two interconnects. So, this W-21 and 16, this, again, are projects that are going to give us connectivity and not just the one distribution line into our city. We're also in design at Seascape, and Shady Lake is, should be checked off there, excuse me. So, we've got a little duplication, but we've got several projects that are still in progress as far as the water section of your CIP. Pine Gully is almost done. Went ahead and put a check mark on that, and we've got a number of lift stations. And our wastewater Main Street demolish is, got a proposal that we're working on. We also completed with the developer over on Lakeside, Behind the Edge, a project, the sanitary relocation, and are in progress on boring the force main at Pine Gully. And we've pushed, previously, that last project here, WW-22, is that lift station off Toddville at the bridge. And so, this has been pushed until we can get the board complete. And some more money. From there, the last page on the Main Street. So, if you remember, Main Street came before Council, would also took it before EDC for discussion. This is out of your livable center study. So, we were about a half a million dollars to start preliminary engineering. There was not real support to move forward with that, so that's kind of been moved out of the current fiscal year, and we'll have that for future discussion. Lakewood was completed. East Meyer reconstruction was moved. We should be in good shape as far as the new, excuse me, that's the street, so sorry, Street 26, East Meyer reconstruction. We've moved that out, and we'll work on North Meyer first with the county, which is your next project, S-27. So, again, the last one there, we did submit for a grant with Harris County. That project's approximately eight million to reconstruct North Meyer along Metter Park, so it'll go from Gail's Feed Store up to 146, past Tooki Seafood. And this will be designed as a complete street, so a lot of the sidewalks and/or places where it's granite trails right now, this will be a pretty extensive reconstruction of that road first. So, we'll focus on North Meyer, and that's probably going to be a good year process before we would go and start tackling on East Meyer. Other items is, but we're still working on Pelican Bay Pool, and we'll talk about that tonight. We're also going to be talking about Wildlife Park Trailhead. We've had that on the CIP a number of days, number of years. And the Carruthers is in progress. Pine Gully Pier, we'll be talking about as well. We've got several generators, you'll see sprinkled on this update. Those are HMGP grants, and we're still trying to get those passed through FEMA. Successful GO bond election in 2023, and those are, we've got those underway with the fire training tower in design, and then the truck is on order. We'll be kicking off, again, the signs and the green ribbon for the landscaping project. And we've also met with the architects today with EMS and the EOC building out at the fire station, so they are starting the full set of drawings officially this week. Again, generators, we've got generators galore with FEMA that we're still pushing. It's been almost three years, I think, and that's how fast FEMA works. So, we're working on that one. We've got a couple of sidewalks that we've pushed. We had one over here by City Hall at Ashley Oaks, and then also an Old Seabrook Village. That subdivision has stopped, and then with the North Meyer coming on, we've moved those out on our CIP from last year. The other project we're working on right now is Old Seabrook Drainage Plan. So, when we looked at Main Street from the livable center, the first thing that we needed to do was to have a drainage plan. We didn't have that, so that's, you've approved that, and Public Works is working with Freezer Nichols on that, and we hope to come back and see what you'd like to do with the other projects. Okay, so overall, this is your summary of projects that I'll be proposing tonight. So, it's not a small chunk of change. As you can see, overall, it's about $19 million. A lot of these are coming from different sources. Grants are a lot of this, but we do have some funding. You've got the $10 million in certificates of obligation, so we do have pretty significant funds that we're drawing down on. But we've got streets at $10 million, and the facility projects, just over $3 million, being your top two. I'm going to ask Kevin to come up, and he's going to kind of help me on some of the descriptions of the proposed projects that are in your fiscal year 25 column. So, there's about a dozen or so sheets we'll run through, and hopefully, y'all know about these projects, but Kevin's your expert, so I'm going to drive, and Kevin's going to assist on this one.
Full State Highway 146, W-16.
Will give us an additional interconnect. Currently, the city's interconnect primary is along Red Bluff Road. Over the years, we've had some issues you're aware of with maintenance. We've recently gone and bored the portion underneath Taylor Lake to give us more sustainability there. The two interconnects here, W-16 and W-21, will give some duplication in the event that that particular interconnect needed rehab, was having issues or repairs. So, last year, we started the Geon interconnect, and we made it up to the city limit at Pasadena. It's going to take some coordination with Pasadena to get that line bored under 146, beyond our city limits, and then tie it into a new line that's being installed now that runs north and south back to Port Road. So, that'll be a great interconnect, help balance pressures, increase volumes for the city. And then the other one along Old 146 is in design. That will allow for another interconnect back to Port Road on a 12-inch line, as opposed to the 8 that's in front of Geon, but give us additional volumes, better balancing, and an additional interconnect. Seascape Water Line, we refer to some of the asbestos cement lines, AC lines. They're very susceptible to heat and drought, and you may hear neighboring cities dealing with so many leaks during the summer. Seabrook is not excluded from that either, but what we're doing is to eliminate this AC-type pipe and move to a more robust C900 pipe. Gives better protection in the event of soil swelling and expanding, shrinking, and we can make it through summers like that, like we had last year, without much downtime as far as breakage and service interruption. So, Seascape Water Line has a lot of that AC-type pipe in it. It's 30 years plus on some of that infrastructure, and it's made it beyond its expectancy for its design. The next one behind Seascape, okay, yeah, I guess we pushed that one to 26, but would be Baybrook, and that's right behind Seascape. So, that one, we elected to move to 26. Okay. WW-14 is a force main improvement to bring sanitary sewer down from the waterfront district at the 90-degree bend as it goes down into the waterfront district. There's a lift station there. This will upsize and better protect that force main that is now suspended from the bridge in front of Pier 8, and then extends all the way down to Main Street. The issue with it is it's a 4-inch, and it's nearing end of life, and we'd like to bore it under the channel there to better protect it, but also to upsize it at the same time to allow for future growth down at the waterfront district. Demo of the wastewater treatment plant will hopefully be taking place later this summer. As it stands today, the new plant's online. We're taking a good portion of the flows. There's still work to be done around Seascape to redirect some of those flows, to include Mystic Village, Sea Ridge, those areas, to get it, Seascape, Baybrook, to get that back to the newly constructed Robinson Lift Station. Once that's complete, we'll move crews over to the Main Street plant to redirect those flows back to the new plant, and then decommission services can begin, hopefully, later this summer. Pine Gully Lift Station Force Main Bore is a similar project just talked about at the waterfront district. This line is also undersized and suspended to that bridge. What this will do, we'll bore it in tandem with the other project and better protect it and upsize it for future growth to the north.
Before we move on, I've got a question about water. The two lines going into Pasadena, were they, Pasadena approved those, right?
Pasadena reviewed the Geon Water Line Interconnect a couple of years back, made comments back to our staff on connectivity, and currently is in some communication back to us on how the design is going. We also are in communication with the designer, and they give us updates on how that's looking. But it does look like it's progressing for that particular interconnect to allow for the bore to go under 146. There's some discovery going on, whether or not there is a line that could be utilized on that west side of 146. We don't feel there is. There aren't any drawings that show that there are. But, either way, I think the Plan B is probably going to be Plan A, and that'll be to bore under 146 and tie it into that newly constructed north-south line. Now, the other one, yes, there's been communication with Pasadena on that interconnect, and that one's in design.
Just curious, so are they just dragging their feet, or what's the problem?
The second, the W-21, no, the W-16 is taking a lot of time for design on our end. Engineers were having a lot of discussion on whether or not to put that line within the right-of-way or go through property acquisition. The property owners on that side value that property probably more than it's marketed at, so that was becoming to really slow this project down. So, discussion is to place it in the right-of-way and complete design.
All right, thanks.
Brian's done a bulk of the street review, and you want to talk on some of that?
S-27, North Meyer. It will be from State Highway 146 all the way to East Meyer. It's about an eight-million-dollar project. We're hoping to get 50% funding from the county. It'll be street, concrete. We're going to try to keep open ditches, I believe, and then new sidewalks on both sides.
And just to kind of add to that, so Brian was, helped us with the cost estimate where we put in the grant application. The county mentioned, I believe, to you a couple of times, but the county did something interesting for us this year in that we didn't get a full award for the eight million. They have elected to give us half of the design cost, and then once a mutually accepted cost estimate on the construction is reached, they'll go back and award the construction cost. This, I think, will be valuable to us in that we won't have to pay the overage if we have underestimated, which I don't, I think Brian did a great job. I think it's pretty comprehensive, but in the case, it ends up bidding for over eight million dollars, we will keep that 50-50 match. We kind of got off a little bit with our sidewalk project, and so I was really pleased that the county did that for us.
Quick question. If they leave open ditches, where would the sidewalks go?
It's going to be where the trail is.
Okay.
There's enough right-of-way to keep the open ditches and put the sidewalk next to it. S-29 is one of the streets we identified with our new road AI program. Limon Street, it's one of the worst ones in the worst condition. It would be added to this year's rehab project. We do propose to make it concrete, have it last longer.
Is that a one-lane street?
It's narrow, very narrow. It's typically, yeah, it's pretty much a one-lane street. The next one on the list is Third Street. It was also identified in the road AI program. It'll go to concrete, keep open ditches, stay the same width. Again, we're doing concrete instead of asphalt. Concrete will get 20-plus years. Asphalt, you may get eight to 10.
That was it. That was the top two. I think I moved over to 25, so on the streets.
Those are 25 for next year?
Correct. Okay, and we're going to move on to parks. This is, we're going to have a lot of discussion here. We've added a number of park projects, and it all stems around this ARPA discussion that we're going to have. So, there's eligible projects with the ARPA money that are available to us. One was water and sewer infrastructure, so we elected to do that Taylor Lake Water Line bore with it, not knowing what that was going to bid out. Luckily, it came in under the allotment that we got for the ARPA funds, but we are left with a pretty sizable surplus at this point. The other eligible group of things that you can spend that money on are what they call quality-of-life projects, i.e., typically, your parks project. So, we've looked at a number of different things that were proposed. So we've looked at a number of different things that we're proposing. And as we go through this, we'll determine what those are. So these are some new things that are added to the list this year under your park section. We have worked and heard from, I believe, the Open Space and Trails as well as a couple of our residents on a solution to go across Pine Gully section. So if you're on the trail, you will enter Toddville pretty much because you've got less than a foot of concrete on the bridge to walk. So there was the idea of putting a pedestrian bridge there. Friendship restroom upgrade. This is interesting. If you guys saw the before and after pictures of our Me- Metter. Metter, always get Metter and mirror. So Metter, we had a 19, I guess it's a 1960s design where you have pony walls. So there was really no dividers among the restrooms. So if you go into Friendship restroom, it's the same design as the other restroom. And so you have three-to-four-foot walls that separate the stalls. So obviously, this is, I put it in red because I feel we've talked amongst ourselves at staff level. And I feel like this is, with as many kids that utilize the ball fields over at Friendship, I think this is definitely a high priority. Metter Park Trail Lighting is a recommendation that came from Open Space Trails. And then some of the new ones that you haven't seen before that we've gotten some cost estimates and will continue to kind of refine this for this discussion is some more upgrades to our parks. So right now, there's a mulch that is periodically changed under the playgrounds. And we are looking at trying to do that more solid, spongy turf upgrade on the playgrounds. In addition, we also looked at Hester Park, which has the same issue with that pedestrian section that you have to get back on Toddville. If you've watched or seen the Lucky Trails Marathon, that has to be closed for a period of time for the runners to go up on Toddville and back down. So this would be a span bridge that would keep all of the pedestrians, marathon, et cetera, back inside Hester with a span bridge over Hester Gully. Shade structures are something else. We're working on the cost estimate still. But to approximately cover most of our playgrounds, it would be just under $100,000. And then the basketball court off Toddville at Baybrook there, we've also priced out an overlay. So you've seen the tennis courts look nice and complete. And then the basketball court is in need of some tender loving care. So that would be a project we're proposing. So these are brand-new and you can see sizable. We're proposing a little over $1 million of new project ads under that section. The park projects that are in your 25 column right now are the Corether's East Track, which we have insurance proceeds for. We'll be talking about your Pelican Municipal Pool redesign. And then the improvements to the former wastewater treatment plant on Main Street and kicking that off. And then I've made the assumption, but I've already inserted their Friendship restroom upgrade to put that as a priority project in your 25. And then again, we'll talk about these ARPA funds. So on the park projects, I'll run through the current ones. Wildlife Trailhead is off of Red Bluff. This is a trailhead that is completely granite, which is not unusual. Most of our parking areas on the east side are granite. But this one typically washes out pretty good. The guys have to get tend to it a lot. And then it's pretty remote as far as if you're on that trail system, not really having a restroom. So we've gone out for the Port of Houston quite a few times to see if we could get grant proceeds from that grant. And we've been denied year over year. So the recommendation on this, if we are leaning towards ARPA funds, would be to do maybe not all, but the proposed here for just over $400,000 would be to go in, concrete that trailhead, do some amenities as far as shade structures, and then have some type of restroom facility at the trailhead. This is also an opportunity. If you don't know, Helen Burton, which was Chair of our Open Space and Trails Committee, did donate a sizable donation to the city. So we've had that donation on hold. And she had envisioned some type of structure or amenity that would be at one of the trailheads. So this would be a proposition, if this project were to move forward, that we would try to honor that donation in some special way at that trailhead in this area. Corether's Garden, kind of kept you updated. This one's reaching the final design and going into, hopefully, RFP. You guys will see that here in the next coming weeks. So that's in your 25 column. Pelican Municipal Pool. We'll do a stop here for a second. This is probably one of the things I need some feedback from council. We met with the designer. So as you know, we've gone into consultant proposal feed that they are, they've gotten the citizen surveys. You've seen that survey that I sent out to you hopefully as well. And so now they're trying to go into conceptual design. Talking with them today and looking at the different options, and this is high level, we are probably looking at, for anything that we start as far as brand-new construction out there with demo, in the range of $2 to $5 million. Looking at our funds with finance, that obviously is not something we have sitting around. And so part of the discussion tonight is to kind of look at the funding options here. So I know we've discussed general obligation bonds. We'll be talking about the police station again here in a minute. So there's opportunity to go back out to the voters. This would be an item that if council would elect, obviously, we're going to have to be looking at a debt tool to be able to fund something of this magnitude. So I'll stop there. Again, I know that you guys didn't have this information prior, but I just wanted to kind of give you what we're hearing preliminary. The next steps is the consultants with the survey information will be bringing back a couple of different options. So when you look at the options, you'll have more information to determine what does $2 million improvement look like? What is a $5 million improvement? And then we'll run some scenarios with our bond council to see, you know, what that would look like to the tax rate as far as debt side of it. So I'm going to stop there for a second. I know that's a lot to comprehend, but any particular comments, questions, or thoughts?
Explain to me, the pedestrian bridge is, tell me again, is that going to be elevated? To go above Toddville? Is that what you're saying?
So it would run parallel with the bridge right now and push the pedestrians just parallel of Toddville Bridge. It'd be a span bridge like it's on the trail system right now and land them on the other side of the bridge and then cross over instead of them having to walk on Toddville. Correct, right.
On the parks list of everything, and I brought this up in the last council meeting, everything is identified for parks just about on the east side, except for Wildwood. And if you go by Bromerhoff, they've got the splash pad. They've got some playground equipment. But they've got a big chunk of land right behind the splash pad. And as opposed to redoing the turf, maybe give thought to a, something that they've got at Seascape, like a tennis court and basketball court. Because there's nothing there on the west side for your teenage, active adult population. So like a tennis court slash pickleball, there you go. I saw you, Jackie. I didn't mean to steal your thunder. Something like that. Because we're getting a new subdivision over there. And just my thoughts.
Anybody else?
I thought there was a basketball court at that park.
There is, but he's talking about these things.
There's a volleyball court.
Yeah, there's a basketball. I see people play basketball over there, too.
There is?
Yeah. Because one of the other things I was hearing was people have talked about a dog park behind there. I know there's a baseball field kind of there. No one ever uses the baseball thing. But if a dog park, technically, since there's already two fences, you'd only need two fences. Because you'd use their fences. So it's two fences and that's actually kind of a cheap deal and way less expensive. But then you get a dog park out of it. So just a thought.
Anybody else?
I know the piece of land you're talking about. And I think there's a lot of cool things that could be done with it. But we have very specific things, especially for that ARPA money that you're talking about. The walkways at either one of those bridges are not just part of our trails, but those are a safety issue. I can't tell you how many times I've come to screeching halt because somebody did something stupid on the side of the bridge. I think those are a pretty high priority. If we ask our citizens to prioritize a lot of this stuff, like some of the other park improvements and the pool, my sense is that we would get an overwhelming vote for the pool. But if it has to go out for vote, there's no other way to fund it. What is our deadline to have that final concept approved? Because there's, we got to get the concept approved before we add it to the ballot and do all the paperwork that goes in ahead of time there. I know it's a year away, but we don't have a year to wait.
So in talking to the consulting team today with the feedback from the survey, they're anticipating in about one month having the first concepts out to you. So obviously, from there, you may have some comments. We may have to massage that. But probably in the next month, you'll start to see the first concepts.
So this would be on the May ballot? And then, so it'd probably be out another summer?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
What else?
So, you know, obviously, we can get back in a second meeting with this. But I think from council's perspective, given that for new construction out there, which I think when we heard what it would cost just to rehab and not look different, and then we would only get an estimated eight years out of anything that we sink it into currently, as opposed to new construction, that's going to be in the millions. And so that's why I want to make sure that council has a comfort level for us to, when we come back, we'll work with our bond council to kind of get some preliminary numbers as well, if that's the direction that council wants to go. But we are, we are most definitely with the input from the residents if we are looking at new construction well over $2 million.
One other question. On the respondents, were we able to tell whether these respondents were people who wanted a lap pool or people who had children who wanted splash pool?
We did ask those questions. So we had 41%, well, it was 41% in the 40 range. And then children, we went into a number of different questions. So a lot of them did have younger children that responded to the survey. What was interesting towards the end of the survey is some of the features that we were trying to get, what the public wanted. And so senior swim had 93% responses as far as under the fitness and therapy section. And then when we asked about features as far as, let's see, ranking it, they, let's see which question I'm looking for here. We asked a specific question on the swim team. So that was, it definitely came through that that is a big one. Yep, here it is. So competitive, we broke these things up as far as different categories. But under the competitive, we asked, you know, what was their response on swim team as opposed, and hosting meets and sports? And so 80% responded in the swim team category, that that was a use that they were looking for in the pool.
So was there anything said to that about being an Olympic-sized pool? Because if you already have that size, you're already so close to an Olympic-sized pool. Just, I think it's smarter to build one. And then I think you even have more meets, you're going to get more use out of the pool. And then when you don't have that, people can swim in it. Because Olympic pools aren't super deep. So a lot of people can stand in at the whole length. You don't make it deep one end. It's just all the exact same depth. But anyway.
So we did ask that question, and that's going to be our cost driver. So that was the two things that we were trying to kind of filter through today was, they started with, if we left the pool that we have today, and again, we would be sinking a lot of money into a shell that in less than 10 years, we're going to have to touch again. However, on the flip side of that, when the question came up, and we can't hold them to these numbers yet, but just what is the first range of price for a swim team-type pool? And how small could it be, given our budget? So six lanes would be recommended as the very smallest pool that they would recommend if a swim team's going to use it. And so just on the lap pool, that part of the project will be 1 point, approximately 1.8, just to start with.
Also, Joe, I did ask one of the swim coach ladies. And she said that that wouldn't really benefit them. I guess it's kind of a standard size as to, you know, what the areas have. So I don't know if that would be good or bad. But I did like the idea.
Well, we could get the Summer Olympics here in Seabrook one day.
God forbid.
Right?
I'm kind of curious about our future demographics. This is what people say they want now. But if we're going to put $2 to $3 to $4 to $5 million into a pool, it needs to be one that Seabrook residents are happy with at least 15 years from now. And trying to anticipate what's going to happen over the next 10 to 15 years. It's kind of a fool's errand, but it's also kind of our job. I would personally lean towards the more, the greater capabilities because the future demand may very well be there. That outstrips what we're doing now to try and save a dollar. Save a dollar a day, it's been 15 later to fix it.
Well, and I think, given any concepts that we're just barely talking to the consultants at this point, it became very clear to that picture. I mean, if you get a whole project out of this, if we touch it, and it's, I think, a complete project and that's something you'll be proud of, we can touch the buildings, et cetera. It is a hard decision, but I think we're probably creeping up towards the $4 to $4.5 million, probably.
With that being said, I always thought the splash pad would be a better, you know, a use of a lot of that area. But, you know, I was talking to someone else that they were talking, they said splash pads, you know, are faulty a lot of times. Do we have that problem? Do we, on Rep Store?
They require a lot of preventative maintenance.
Yeah.
If you're not good at the preventative maintenance part, they do fail. You need backup parts. You need staff that's attentive to how they're acting and how they're about to act. And you need to understand.
Well, like any swimming pool, really, kind of, right? Okay. All right, thank you.
One more question. Are we in hopes to put this as a referendum on a vote? Or are we needing to make a decision by city council? There are options in terms of allowing the citizens to make a decision. Because if they want a pool and we need to spend $2 to $5 million, I suspect we should let them vote on it, either in a bond or whatever it is, whatever mechanism that we need, so that we give them what they want.
I don't know if this is the right time to bring it up, but we've talked about a lot of things. Some of the things are got-to-have projects and some of the things are nice to have. And I hope everybody's aware of the fact of what happened to one of our apartment complexes, that it was taken off the tax rolls. It was a $40 million value by HCAD. And that represents about $100,000 a year. If you go down into Seabrook, we've got 14 apartment complexes. Of that 14, 10 are over 20 years. The average life of an apartment complex, according to Google, is about 25. Nine of these complexes are over 30 years. The law that took our one, the Regatta Bay, off the books is still there. Now, there's talk about that they're going to rescind it or adjust it. But that ain't going to happen until, at the best, September of next year. So we've got a lot of suspect, or let's just say, apartments that could fall under that. The value of those right now is $180 million. That's the ones that are over 20 years old. That represents over $800,000 in adware and taxes to the city. So when we start talking about capital improvement projects, I really think, I'm... I, I really think, I'm, I'm just very reluctant to say, yeah, let's go, you know, do something for the park or something like that. Uh, and then we lose a bunch of ad valorem money. Um, so in making these decisions, and especially when we go into budget, and are starting to set the tax rate, the ad valorem tax rate, that all's gotta be taken in there, because this is an unknown liability at this point.
Can you clarify on what the law is again, on how that all works? Is it, is it an age?
I'll, uh, let me, let me, let me speak. I've, I've done a lot of research, talked to a lot of representatives, talked to senators and state reps. Um, they passed a law in 2019 that was supposed to only be for a small district in Austin. That project never got built. But some attorneys and one of our state representatives, not one of ours, but a state representative, found a loophole in the law that allows a developer, an apartment developer, to go in by an existing apartment complex and call it low-income rentals, which, by the way, all of the ones that have been bought up have not dropped their rates. They're all still the original rates. Uh, and become a tax-free apartment without any knowledge of anybody else. They just go ahead and do it, and it's automatically tax-free. There's no oversight, there's no, uh, you know, we did, we did the one project over by, by Chesapeake, and we had to sign all sorts of documents, take votes, have public hearings. None of that happens under this new law. Now, Metten Court is trying to get it rescinded. There was, it came up at the last meeting, or the last legislation. They did pass it, the governor didn't sign it to rescind it. Uh, it's a little watered-down version of what really needs to be done. They just need to take it away. There's talk that, yes, it's going to be rescinded, but you gotta remember, if they don't pass it until the next legislation, which is April, May, uh, it won't go into law until '26. There's a lot of time between now and then to, for these guys to buy up some of these projects, and they are active. And, and uh, there was, there's been quite a few in Houston. Uh, we've researched it, that they bought. Uh, we're trying to find out if there's other cities. I've scared enough mayors right now, they're all searching. But a small community like us can't take that kind of a hit. You know, without knowledge, without budget, Mike, Mike was, uh, was beside himself when he learned it. I mean, it just comes off the books, and it doesn't show up until...
They don't lower their, their rates. I mean, there's gotta be somebody we can, I don't get it.
Well, you know, they did, uh, it wasn't on a lot of people's radar because it was only meant for a small area in the Hu, in the Austin area. And so when it came up for vote, a number of them, including our reps, voted, yes. But they, they were thinking it was only for this section. It wasn't until '21, they, when some attorney found a loophole in this, and uh, Wayne Joe Tofino has had a write-up on it. I mean, there's, every, a lot of people are aware of it, and a lot of people want it changed. We can't recoup any of it. It's, it's gone. I mean, they're not gonna, they're not, they can take it off the books, but we're already... It, it won't, it, it won't be in effect if they voted in this session, which isn't until uh, April of '25, that it will go into law until the end. Now, there, the watered-down version did pass, you know, it, well, it passed without final signature by the governor, but it did, it, it was a 90-day wait period, and once the 90 days went, it became law. But it's a watered-down version, and I, we're checking to see if there were dates where this would go into effect immediately. Uh, Gail thought that maybe it was September of this year, that that other law would go into effect. But there's still a lot of time between now and September. But God forbid if it goes into '26. It, it's, it was an oversight, they're admitting to it, they're admitting their mistake, but they're having a hard time correcting it.
It, obviously it affects our budgets at least for the next two years.
Well, it actually affected it last year. We didn't notice it because there was, we had a banner year.
There, there's...
For a small city, we didn't see it. It, they don't, they don't tell us exactly which, they just give us a lump sum. Until this year, Mike said, whoa, 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 what's happened?
So, so we are short already?
Yes. Yeah, we were going into this year. Close to it. What, what's the number?
Uh, about 120, about 120.
120,000, 120,000 a year.
But that's just for this year?
Right, and...
Last year.
Right, so about 240 is probably what...
And that's just one po, and that's just one apartment project. Uh, Houston has had a couple bigger ones than that.
But that's done, there's nothing we can do about it here. It affects what we can approve, what we can really support going forward. Uh, having less coming into the general fund, obviously, or less than anticipated, coming into the general fund.
When, when it comes up this year, I've been asked to go up and testify it, uh, to the legislature. Uh, Gary, um, is Gary's last name, Senator, Congressman, uh, not Congressman, uh, State Rep. Gary, uh, the one that's passing, the one that's written the bill. Mine just went blank. Anyway, uh, he has asked me to come up and testify, cause I called him to get a clarification on what he's doing, but he's trying to get it rescinded.
But the liability is not just the 100,000, 120,000 we're short this year, it's the potential...
Exactly.
That's already on the books. We're gonna lose that money.
That's gone, but it's the potential that we go ahead and say, all right, this is what we're looking at, and we've got the ad valorem for X number, and then all of a sudden, boom, three more projects go.
There's, there's, there is that risk, and we have to consider that risk when we're looking at some of this stuff.
You know, we can't foresee the future, so...
We, we can't foresee the future, but it does, it does affect what we can ethically vote for now. Uh, what we can really support now. One of the things as we were going through, and I'm, forgive me for jumping subjects a little bit, uh, on the, on the roads. The funding. Or I'm sorry, it was wastewater. If I could read my own handwriting, I'd be a lot better off. On the wastewater projects, uh, the funding for those was pretty, was pretty consistent in impact fees. On the, on the big sheet here, it shows impact fees, developer contributions, uh, COS and impact fees. Well, that, that one's already done. Uh, potential grant. We don't have that much impact fees and developer contributions coming in in the next two years, do we?
Impact fees, we had built up a pretty good nest egg, but what we did over the last year and this fiscal year is work with Kevin and Brian and your interconnects and different things that we needed to pull the trigger on, worked with them, and so we've, in the next three to four years, as you get out on the plan, unless we now start to get new impact fees, we've identified how we're gonna spend that down completely, so...
So, so we have a nest egg that can accommodate these costs without having to dip into general funds or anything like that, but that next egg, nest egg will be expended within two to five years?
We, we've programmed it to zero, so right now, we've, with, based on the projects that we have in the chute, in the next five years, we will have depleted them.
And...
If not another dime came in today.
And just like the bill we were just talking about, hoping that it goes our way, and we get enough development to help at least somewhat replenish that fund.
All right. So we ran through parks. Other parks project, just kind of going through the presentation, this is the, from the Livable Center study. Uh, 860 is just a preliminary number based on HGAC. So as we kick this off, uh, we'll get into design, and then this will be back on next year. Hopefully we'll have some concrete numbers. So wrapping up parks, um, I keep throwing around the word ARPA. The remaining funds out of the ARPA funds are, uh, the other bucket of money that you can spend that, or bucket of eligible projects is quality of life. Um, the intent and the way that the law is read is that you are improving the health of your community by making improvements to your park s, uh, system or your park amenities, is how that's worded. So that's where we are, our attention has been drawn, and we've got a number of different ideas, uh, recommendations for you. So we talked earlier, uh, it's approximately $611,000. So the scenario that I'm proposing tonight with the numbers that we have would be to tackle the wildlife trailhead. We would not have quite enough to do both pedestrian bridges, so recommendation would be, uh, start with Hester Pedestrian Bridge, the basketball court overlays, and then the shade structures in the park. So, you know, obviously with the heat that we go through, and it's getting worse, um, I think the shade structures would be, um, a good amenity to the, the kids on the different playgrounds. So, um, I'll stop right there for a second. Again, these are, are, are my recommendations, um, with those funds.
Can you explain the trailhead, wildlife trailhead?
Sure. Let me go back. Uh, the drawing that we have, Brian's kind of put together preliminary, Brian, you can come on up, Brian, this is, he's kind of helped to design this. Do you wanna kind of walk him through the concept?
Yeah, it would be, so the, the actual access drive would now be come concrete, proposing parking on the west side of the, uh, of the drive. Uh, benches, shade structures, uh, trash cans. And then in that highlighted area, I kind of went out and looked for a modular restroom, having it placed in that general area for that. That's kind of what the picture is down on the bottom left.
Where, where is the demand for this coming from? I remember it coming up once before last year, I believe, somebody presented that it would be a good idea to do. But $467,000 on a diminished budget, how many people are gonna use this? Does it really make sense to prioritize this where it is right now?
Again, this is recommendations just mainly from what I've heard through the years. I, you know, we go through a number of HOA meetings, um, and so we get, throughout the year, we get a number of feedbacks. We've done citizen surveys. Uh, those that are probably avid runners or avid walkers on the entirety of our trail system. If you're going from, instance, Pine Gully all the way back to, uh, the Port Trail that we've got, kind of that traverses the port, it's a pretty long stretch. And so if you go to the restroom, really, you have to hit Toddville to go to Baybrook, or you have to go all the way to Pine Gully, and then there's not another restroom if you decide to come back, um, if Friendship Park is open. So that was one of the things I was talking with Brian and Kevin today. That part, or the, right now that restroom closes at...
At four, four or five?
Four to 5:30. So that's where the kids are usually playing soccer in that Friendship Park area. So the Friendship, uh, Park, or excuse me, Friendship restroom upgrade would also allow them to add a feature like the Metter Park, which has got the gate, self-locking gate on there. So we could allow that restroom to be accessible as well. That would open up another restroom in that area, but from Friendship Park to where the Public Sports Center is, there's really not an amenity, uh, if you're walking into the evening, that you have uh, water fountains or restrooms that are highly accessible in that area. So that is one of those things that's really, uh, coming from years of hearing from input on meetings that I've gone to, citizen surveys, uh, and so this is strictly a recommendation. And Helen's donation, we've been putting aside, uh, looking for the right park project. This is just also another add-on, if this one were to get approved, that at some point, we need to, we need to honor her donation and put it in one of the trailheads, and so that would be the other, uh, and...
I think it'd be a great thi, I think it'd be a great thing to have there. But is it more important than the pedestrian bridges? Is it more important than shade structures or resurfacing the, the tennis court? Or the playgrounds? That's what I'm not entirely comfortable with. If we had the money, and we may, if we had the money, absolutely, that would be awesome, but...
Right. Well, and as we get to one of these last slides, that, that's, you know, the beauty, there is a beauty of COVID. The ARPA money that came out of this, we do have a sizable amount to do, uh, all the recommended projects. So this would not, this would not hurt our, uh, budget in any way. It's just finding the right mixture that council's in agreeance with us with which ones. But 611,000 is going a long way as far as some of these park projects.
I have a question about, um, why don't we have the restrooms open a little bit later? I mean, and obviously for vandalism or something, but is there a way to improve the bathrooms, leave them open longer?
Currently, we have, uh, employees go around seven days a week, holidays, 365. And we'll go to each restroom that's not automated, and we'll open them up, stock them, clean them, make sure they're good for the day, and then to the end of the day, we have to close them down. History has shown us, leaving them open overnight invites in, uh, takes on a lot of vandalism. Uh, we take on vandalism as it is during the day when it's broad daylight, but... So we are now trying to automate our parks and if, our park restrooms, and we have the five. So if you've been to Baybrook, that one's, uh, locks automatically, and we can extend that beyond five o'clock. Uh, we recently did Metter Park, which had the partitioned bathrooms, uh, no privacy, and wasn't automated, so we had to close that one at 4:30 as well. We have joggers there that wanted to have access earlier than the 7:30 or, or 8 o'clock on the weekends, and we were able to automate it to open up earlier. We can do those things with automation. That's why Friendship is targeted next. But again, as it stands today, the condition it has been in for so long, we have to go lock it down every day. So, uh, with the improvements there, similar to Metter, we would be able to do that. We'd give privacy in the restrooms themselves, and then we automate the, the gates to allow it to lock at a later hour. Right now, we're doing 7:00 PM at Metter.
Yeah, I mean, cause it's, you know, 7:00 and it's still daylight out, and I mean, kids are outside playing or whatever.
Exactly. And we'll, we'll be able to do that. If we were to try to do that today, it would, it would take overtime every day. So that's just been a policy to open them each day, weekends and holidays included, and then close them at the end of the season.
Gotcha. And then, I mean, I'm hoping you guys have security cameras on all these, and I'm sure they can put a little screen for the dispatch to kind of keep an eye on them. I don't know, on the parks at night.
Yeah, and in particular, we have fibers, so it's possible.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Oh, one more question. Why is that bathroom not, doesn't have to be elevated? The one that you're proposing at the wildlife trailhead?
Well, it's, uh, it's out in floodplain, it's not in the floodplain. The elevation there is not in the floodplain.
Okay.
It's in Zone X.
That's why the sewage treatment plant is over there, it's out of the floodplain.
Okay. Good answer. Thank you.
Maybe the barge can come over there to use it.
So Gail, do you need prioritization? What, what do you need from us this evening? I've, I've learned a lot tonight. I'm glad we met here. I don't feel like we provided you a whole lot. What do you need from us before we can go away?
So I guess the first thing I'd ask of council is if you feel strongly about any of the projects on this page not being diverted to ARPA funds, um, that's what I'd like to hear first.
My, my only question is, why would we pave the trailhead at Wildlife? I mean, it's crushed granite, it holds up. I, it's a wildlife park. I don't see pavement adding to that as far as the wildlife look.
Well, a lot, and I'll let Kevin's...
I don't mind the restroom or, or the shade structures, but I'm not sure why we would pave it.
I, I agree with no pavement. I think you can, you know, when you do that crushed granite, those are plenty good, you know, for, and the way you guys have done them, you guys have already done it.
And I, I, I mean, I use, I use that one...
How many times do we have to overlay that?
Never seen more than three or four cars there ever. You know, some, even on Saturdays, I don't see a whole lot of cars there.
Can you do everything except the pavement? And then if we find out we need the pavement, we can come back later?
Sure.
Then we can reserve the ARPA funds?
Sure. I mean, that, that's, this is exactly the kind of feedback we needed.
Okay. Then I, I would suggest that we go forward with everything except the paved aspect, see how it goes, and then we can come back for that. how it goes, and then we can come back for that.
Or with that money, automate another bathroom, but I just don't see putting money into that.
I think that will be our last restroom that's not automated, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And what do you mean not automated? That will still be open all night, or?
But they'll have the digital access.
So, it'll still be the same hours as the other bathrooms?
They can program it, however. So, if it's time change, they can make it go till, I don't know, at 8:30 or?
Right, but just before dark, because the parks now by ordinance close at dark.
So, how many bathrooms do we have automated?
Four of the five. This'll be the last one.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
Hey, what was the deal with the, like, the crushed granite? What's the negative there?
Main, it's, it's not unmanageable, though. This was, this was an opportunity to upgrade the pavement there to concrete, but the beauty of this is, it can be mixed and matched. I mean, restroom, no restroom, concrete, leave it as the surface of the restrooms now. I'd recommend we put the parking stops and, you know, if you elect the shade structure restrooms and things like that. But, yeah, the concrete could wait. It's just something that was put together and open for discussion.
People ADA spots.
Yep, designated ADA spot. Yeah.
I, I agree with all of those having water access there as well, cool water access there as well. But if we tried to trim money off of that particular project, P-12, where should it go to? Do, can we just keep that ARPA money until we decide what to spend on?
How much was it for the other bridge?
Or have it, or have a contract locked up by December 24th.
Yeah, and it's actually, September is what I had on my notes.
How much was it, how much was it for the other pedestrian bridge?
311.
Okay, I just want to make a note. The, it's 902 Red Bluff is the new trailhead, right? Yes. It's .3 miles to Friendship Park. Point three.
Well, that's, that's from the trailhead.
Yeah, that's if you walk down Red Bluff. There's no signboard. Yeah, you'd have to go back to the trailhead, back up to Public Works, and then come across, or you walk down Red Bluff, or the drainage ditch. You're trying to give all the options.
What's that 10,000 square, 11,000 square foot of paving? What, what kind of cost are we looking at?
It was significant. Do you remember the portion of it that was, concrete was a big driver in the cost of that. The restroom was at 100?
160.
Yeah, so.
Or concrete. Maybe it was.
I'm trying to.
The other building.
Right. Concrete was a big portion of it.
Well, it had Hester, but this one, that other one.
I would also like, sorry, go ahead. I would just also like to say no parking on that, and if the bathroom is doable, then I'd go vote for that, but maybe also do the other pedestrian bridge, like Rob was saying.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's a safety issue, and I think that bridge needs to be taken care of. And if we can save money out of this ARPA project or another one, can we, can we come up with 300,000 for the bridge?
I'm a big fan of the pedestrian bridges. I'm a big fan of upgrading the, of the maintenance that's due and the shade on the playgrounds, and the shade where it's appropriate. Kind of on offense about the trailhead, it's not a bad thing. We have to allocate the ARPA money if that's the best place to do it. I definitely don't have an issue with it, but I would hate to put that above a pedestrian bridge at Hester, for example.
Well, Hester's 141,000.
I think we can do it.
Well, I, I know, but that concrete is more than 141,000.
I don't know.
I'm looking at my spreadsheet, I don't have it off the top of my head.
Well, one of the things I noticed, the 400,000 that we're looking at, this actually, Brian, this was on your two-seater restroom cost proposal, so that's already going to go down on the 467 a little bit, but then minus the concrete, it'll be a pretty significant chunk off what you're looking at tonight.
Well, see if you can just add, if you can take off the concrete at the trailhead and add in Hester Bridge, and see what we come up with then.
Weren't we already doing Hester Bridges? I thought this was?
Pine Gully.
No, we're doing Pine Gully.
Pine Gully.
And we'll try to squeeze in both. It sounds like y'all want to try squeeze in both the pedestrian bridges. Okay. All right. All right. I think I'm coming to the, close to the end, so, one more section.
Okay.
All right, so, facilities. Any more question on parks? Okay. All right, so, facilities. We are still going to get that signage RFP out. So, under this section, we've got the EMS and EOC, which is your bond program, the training towers, the bond proceeds. The new one tonight that I'd like to, I've heard from several of you, is tackling the community house and doing a remodel on there. So, I've not had the opportunity of getting a bid out. We did meet with a local vendor and approximately came up with about $150,000 worth of potential remodels there. So, that is something that, looking at the ARPA, we were talking internally today, it doesn't look like it fits the definition, really, of the ARPA funds as far as health or those type of things. So, this would be something, if we wanted to proceed with that, this would be a general fund recommendation as far as expenditure. So, again, this is, we'll, we'll get kicked off. EDC is what is on our facility sheet for funding. This is going to be, once we get into this with a consultant, this is a big project that will tackle the gateway, the directional wayfinding, and new park signage. So, EDC's aware of it when the time comes, and we'll be having a conversation as far as instituting the, the spending over there. For current projects, again, I mentioned earlier, EMS and EOC, this is our bond project. So, we finalized pretty much the layout. The snippet that you see there is pretty close to what we finalized today. So, minus, we did, we're able to combine the restrooms into two-seaters, so you don't have four bathrooms. The training tower, I've been working with that liaison with the volunteer fire department, so we've got a pretty good plan on that one. And then the community house. So, when we talked originally with a contractor, in just brevity of what we were looking at, it would be a refresh inside and out. So, we've got some pretty dark stains on the internal. So, we were looking at, with this designer, it'd be a light palette that would go on in the inside, much like you've probably seen on your wedding venues, barnumium-type looks. Restrooms need some refreshing and upgrades if you've gone in either one of those restrooms. Light fixtures would be upgraded, fans would be upgraded. The stage area, we've talked about if we could afford, that's, that would be the most expensive piece, is removing the stage area and going flat surface inside the entire structure. And again, this would be a project that we would most likely need to take from general fund reserves. Starting price would be around 150,000. So, this is another project. I'm looking for some feedback from council as far as a keeper in my recommendation package.
You could find lamps.
What was that, what was that originally built for? Like, what was the stage, why did they have a stage in there? And is it used? I know it's the Santa, he sits on the stage.
Well, it goes back to the original. So, it was a schoolhouse decades and decades ago, and so it's, it's had many uses through the early part of the century.
They had bands in there at one point, too.
They had a group back 27 years ago of actors, you know, children, of doing plays and everything. And that's why you have all your stage lights up there. And that connected to everybody here, too.
So, nobody really utilizes the stage anymore?
No, I mean, the, the drama team that was in there for several years, they used it. Our, you know, Santa events, we typically put Santa up there.
Right.
But, you know, I think that, that's, you know, we've looked at it, and the mayor's looked at it, you know, architect, and there's some structural things underneath, removing that, that would be the challenge on that piece. So, that'd probably be something we'd have to.
But the floor was still there.
No, I think it was, if we took the stage off, we found it was nothing underneath, right? Yeah. There's nothing underneath that stage, so we'd have to rebuild it.
The floor extended underneath it.
We do it on the back corner, and it was just.
Well, that sounds expensive. I'd be a fan for redoing it, but not maybe taking the stage out if it's going to be so costly.
There, there are some upgrades that need, not upgrades, the bathrooms are terrible. The stage may or not be necessary for what we use it for as a city. I would just want to be very careful that we maintain the appearance and feel of a building that is approaching historicals building status if it's not already there. We've lost a lot of his, of the Seabrook history in the last five years, and I would hate to lose this one due to lack of maintenance, and it needs to be painted.
This, this has been remodeled, though. There's no historical significance to this building.
Hysterical?
Hysterical, historical. There is nothing, nothing on this building historic. It's been remodeled, all the paneling that's been put in, taken out.
A couple of times.
Yeah, there's, there's no historicals.
I've, I've heard a lot of different stories about that. I wasn't here when it, the building was built.
Joe was.
Yeah, I wasn't here when it was built, but, and I know what you're saying, Tom, about it's been redone, like, underneath those two windows on either side, that used to be horizontal, like a log cabin. They came back and put wood paneling up to, so it's different. If you look at that picture from 1942, when the soldiers muster there, so soldiers from World War I and World War II actually did go there. They, they stayed it out in the yard and all that, and then they would get on the train that came over where Hooters is. There was a train station there, and they'd get on the train and go to Louisiana to go on maneuvers, then go over, over to Europe. But, besides that, I know what you mean, but people see it as our community center. There used to be a lot of fun deals there. They used to do tons of things. It was a women's civic club that did all their things there. So, they had a Halloween thing, they had something in the springtime, they had a July Fourth deal, they had, of course, the Christmas, you know, lighting, and they had all sorts of cookies and cakes out there, kind of like what we do, but a lot of women's groups did that. Upgrading it for this type of thing, I think it's good, because then get more people to use it. Because it's our thing, we're not going to build a brand-new type, you know, modern facility, so just let's keep this up.
All right, we could pursue the general scope of work. I mean, obviously, when we come back, we'll, after we bid it, we can have further discussions, but I'll work with finance and, and once we get the budget together, if that's good with council, we'll, we'll bring this back as a finalized CIP project. Just the last thing, so this is the IT section, this is just a carryover. So, with the PD working with League City and the consortium, we're still waiting on the final build-out of that software. So, this remains on your carryover list for fiscal year '25. That's just simply, we've got 150, we haven't paid League City until that software is, is done. And last but not least, I would like to end our discussion with the possibility of council entertaining, going back with our recently consultant on the police station, that we had a police station in the court concept, and discuss tonight the possibility of re-engaging them for just a police station. So, we've, we've talked in depth about space confinements for the police, as well as if we are in another surge-type event, their particular department being in this area, and, and how that would stop a lot of their functions for a long period of time. So, I'd like to open the floor on this one. 39,850, and talking with our current architect that we've been working with would get us a kickoff to do some programming for just that department. That would scale down the, the use, the department, the square footage, and hopefully the price. But, I do want to see what council's temperament is on trying another round for this public facility.
Yes. What we have will not support the city for the next 15 to 20 years. We have to do something. Anything we do is a three-to-five-year completion. We need to take action.
I agree. And what, where would this be, ARPA rep store also?
Right, we would go back with the same area that we're proposing, it would just be, we're downsizing this a little bit.
I agree, and I, and I really think it's incumbent upon members of council that we need to sell this, because the public was not informed, the ones that I talked to, and they just didn't get the whole picture of what, what we're dealing with, and what we'd be dealing with with another ICH, because it would just freeze PD, not only PD, but all the equipment that's down there, too. So, yes.
I, I would tend to agree as well. Again, I think with Buddy, what he said, too, I don't think the public was informed. And I think if we have another, pray that we don't have another disaster this year or coming up, because once they see what will happen, they'll give them some more insight, too, and they'll understand what will, what we go through.
And my point is, I, I'm not disagreeing with you, Rob, but way longer than looking out 15 years, I want this thing to be where they can use it for many, many years. Way longer.
Well, I think, that's, that's what was on the, the bond, and it failed. So, but I do, I do believe that, you know, that those of you that were here during ICH then didn't, didn't see the full impact of what happened in this building. I mean, and what happened in this town. Police were displaced for months. You know, how do you operate a city with, with police driving around in their cars 24/7, and not, not being able to come into this building? City Hall, same thing. You know, we were, we were in bad shape. You know, it took a lot of staff to bring the city back, and, and we can't afford that to happen again. And, and I don't think the public realized it, there's a lot of new people in this town, and I don't think they realize the impact of, of this location. And, and, yeah, we rolled it out fast, thinking that, you know, it's public safety, who wouldn't vote for public safety? But obviously, we were wrong. You know, should we have waited another cycle? Maybe. But, you know, we got the opportunity to do it again and do it right, but this is desperately needed.
And I really think that as we go forward with this, as we get to the point of proposing it, we need to have one voice and come together as to what we're saying, you know, and agree upon why it's needed, so that we have a unified voice from each of us going forward.
I agree, but we need to, we certainly need to rethink about how and how much money we're spending. That was a, that bond was, the feedback that I got was negative about the cost, how much it was.
It was three and a half cents on, on the average person's home.
I get it, but they didn't, they didn't, and we didn't explain it to them well enough.
Well, you're right, because it was just like, oh, there they went, they want a new.
They want a new house.
Palace and all that, because I remember when this city hall was built, it was a group, I won't name his name, but anyway, he had his thing, he had a big sign, baseball, not Taj Mahal, because it was over there with the police station, it was a little, little league field. Oh, yeah.
Oh, there's going to be naysayers.
Yeah, as long as the chief doesn't have.
Well, I think there's some people that voted for it. All you have to do is give them the ammunition, too, and, and the reasoning rationale that we're selling.
We seem to be of pretty unified mind that we, as council members, have to do a better job of selling it, and city staff has pretty clear guidance and direction from us to pursue this and move forward with it.
Okay, that's the direction I needed. So, again, we've made a quite a sizable investment with the architect that we're using, so that would be my proposal I'll bring forward. I've already worked with him, and, and what you're looking at is the top portion of that proposal, so we'll get that on a very soon agenda and get that moving forward.
I'm sorry, you're saying that we would be using the same architect we used before?
And, and the way, the, what I would recommend, 39,000, as you remember, we started off 75,000 to get this kicked off, to do what they call programming. So, they worked months and months with staff to do all of the assessments, the needs, all of that is with him. If we start over, we're probably looking at paying upwards of 75,000 to 90,000 to start this whole process with another architect. I mean, and we can certainly do that. I mean, and we can certainly do that, but that would be, it would be added cost if we want to go that route.
I, I agree, but we do own all of that already. All of it, we've already spent, we own.
We do.
I understand, we can't bring that forward. I was not pleased with that architect. I would argue with him today, he doesn't understand what VE is, and I'm concerned about that, so I'm not happy with that architect. I do think we need to-
But, but another, another architectural group will not use his conceptual design. They'll start from scratch. They can't, even with, even if we own that, they're not gonna use it.
That's, that's the negotiating point.
They're not gonna use it. Been in the business too long, Tom.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Did have one more slide, apologize. Uh, so on the last section there, you have sidewalks, which we've added, uh, in this current fiscal year, you had a hundred thousand dollars, so that they've just finished up the Lake Cove and, what was the other subdivision you did? Wildwood. So those two subdivisions are depleted your hundred thousand in your fiscal year twenty-four. Uh, if we're fortunate enough to put the hundred thousand from general funds, we're proposing for twenty-five, another hundred thousand with the focus areas of Lake Point Forest and Seabrook Island areas. That concludes my presentation. If you've got any other comments or questions or any other projects that you would like staff to look at?
Two. A generator for the community building?
Yeah, so we at Ike, when Miramar in particular was wiped out before Red Cross could get here, uh, it got extremely hot and we had no place to put them. Uh, the churches were down and such, and the, that ended up being something we could squeegee the water out of, and at least for a few days, we had a cool place for someone to be. And so that's where that idea came from. The HMGP, as you know, it's a, a twenty-five seventy-five match, so we were just looking for where, areas that we could place, um, and I believe that was on our, our hazard mitigation plan for, um, you know, for a shelter of some sort. We didn't have any other place, so that's where our attention went.
Isn't, isn't that a rallying point for, for shipping people out during a storm too? Isn't that the meeting place that, uh, we have to, have to get them to? People that don't have transportation out of the city, isn't that the rally?
That's what we used it for, yes. Um, you know, when we were working with Harris County, they got buses and that was a good place for us. Again, it was all about at that particular moment, how hot it was of getting them to the same place. And, uh, Public Works, I think, was able to get the air conditioner, I think y'all got the air conditioner back up and running.
And we utilized it again during winter storm Yuri, when so many people had water breaks in their homes or without power, that was a warming center.
Yeah, so it-
And with that, from that perspective, it makes a lot more sense than when I just, just looked at it. The other thing is FAC twenty, uh, with the directional signs and signage and all that kind of fun stuff. Yes, what can we do to expedite? The road's built, we need to do something to help out. Our business is on either side of it.
So noted.
Anybody have any directions for the, for Gail? Any additional, I think you've got some notes, right? Anything else?
I do, would like, I know this is gonna be small, but if we could add pickleball to something that we already have existing, I don't really know all the details of it, but it would be something simple.
We do, yeah, we do. We did add it in the last two years to Baybrook, so they have, they've outlined a pickleball court.
Well, that's good to know. Okay, thanks.
You're welcome to come over, Jack. But you have to come before seven o'clock, we watch the backboard.
Okay, so we'll adjourn the workshop session. Uh, new business, take appropriate action on capital improvement, CIP project preparation for future discussions. I, I haven't heard any, right? Does anybody have anything? Do I hear motion? All in favor? Seven thirty-five.